Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular July 14th Rhinebeck Town Hall meeting. Will everybody please stand up for the pleasure?
(inaudible)
Let's approve our fire minutes. I'd like to do a motion to approve our June 13th board minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Come on, favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve our special time board meeting minutes of July 2nd?
Motion.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second. Sorry.
Okay, I have to abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
That's fine. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No standing. Oh, can you announce anything? We asked for a long silence. We had our friend and Seth, our John and Jack, the dying casters. We were calling all of them on Saturday. And we only have a minute to have a moment of respect. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? We are on our summer schedule. Our next meeting is August 11th. We need a special meeting. I'm going to go to our first order of business security reports. We have Jessica Scott here from the Conservation Advisory Board taking us through a unified solar permit. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, everyone. I've been here on a number of occasions and have mentioned this, so now I'm here to walk you through it in a little bit more detail. NYSARDA has proposed a unified solar permit for adoption by municipalities around New York State to streamline the solar permitting process for specific types of photovoltaic arrays. So these are only for arrays that meet four criteria. They have to be less than 12 kilowatts. They have to be roof mounted. They have no zoning variance, and they must have no architectural or historical review. And so for projects that meet this sort of criteria, NYSARDA has suggested that we adopt or that municipalities adopt a unified solar permit. This is to streamline the process of permitting. It's also to make -- it could, in theory, streamlining the process could reduce consumer costs for solar because you don't have to research each municipality's permitting process. Currently, from what I understand, in Rhinebeck, we currently apply for a building permit, and that covers these sorts of solar arrays. So what the resolution that I'm proposing would do is just replace for building -- for photovoltaic arrays that meet those four criteria, it would replace that application for a building permit with the permit that I've given you guys a copy of. This permit is -- has been reviewed by a panel of experts and certainly satisfies all of the safety requirements that are required that would be in a typical building permit. It just streamlines it and gives you all the information upfront. So this is the sort of thing that your company who would be installing the solar would fill out and submit all this information to the building department or whomever, the planning board, who would approve this. The fee structure would remain the same. Whatever you charge for a building permit, you can charge for this. The main difference would be that you'd be guaranteeing a seven to 14-day turnaround on this. That's what the solar permit does, is it streamlines. It gets you all the information you need so that we can guarantee a seven to 14-day approval process. Turns out that it's ended up being a three-day approval process in a lot of towns because this is really straightforward. It's a very -- it's an easy permit. So benefits: it streamlines the process. It indicates that Rhinebeck is open for business as it comes to small photovoltaic arrays. So by adopting a streamlined process, that makes it easier for the consumer. You're indicating that this is a place where we want solar, where we encourage solar. Again, it's for very specific sorts of projects, so you're not looking at things like ground-mounted or pole-mounted systems, which require setbacks in Rhinebeck. This doesn't apply to those at all. It's all the information you need for safety. And again, it could reduce this consumer cost. Additionally, final benefit: $2,500. So right now, there's a consolidated funding application, a CFA, that if you adopt this permit by September, you have to fill out the CFA, which is pretty straightforward. And also, you'll note that we have a copy of a resolution passed by Rosendale here. Rosendale has also offered to share their CFA, their application, with us. It's very straightforward. It's not the mess that some of these can be. And for adopting it, as long as there are still funds available, which we're not sure that there are, but there probably are, by adopting it before September, you get $2,500 just for adopting it. The Conservation Advisory Board would love to have some of that as an intern for an internship position, but that's just a added bonus to adopting what is a streamlined, simple, and complete application process for solar arrays that meet these four criteria. Any questions?
Has this been run by the planning board and the building inspector?
No.
I think that's really the first step.
But the permit itself was created by a board of those individuals and by structural engineers.
Yeah, but I don't know how that fits with our law.
Our law current -- yeah.
Jessica's just here to bring this to us. We would have to --
Okay, so that's okay.
-- for us to give it to our code enforcement officer and our zoning enforcement officer.
And I think the planning board, too.
I agree. Just keeping in mind that in order to get that funding, we need to have that CFA submitted and have -- and we've got a month and a half, two months left before that expires, but keeping in mind that we need to have enough time to submit that application.
How do we get to see it now?
What do you mean?
Is this it? This is what we have to fill out? Or what is that?
No, no. There's an actual application. Yeah. And it's, again, I have Rosendale's copy, which they're willing to share with us from Citizens for Local Power. It's pretty straightforward.
But can contact General?
Yep, definitely. And I'd be willing, the board will do it.
Thank you.
Yep. Any questions, any other questions?
Any other questions?
No.
I'd like to proceed with this before it's led by our code enforcement zoning officer and planning board.
Sweet. And I'm happy to come back if you need me in the future for this. So, sure.
We have a bunch of reservations. We're also doing this part. Let's do some, please, on updates. I'm going to hold over the Compton Mandela Park artifacts because Nancy Kelly is going to be available. Anybody else have any updates?
A small bit of information. We'll be meeting Joe and myself and Roger Newkirk and Kathy and Bobby Fitzpatrick on Wednesday at 6:00 PM to discuss the dog kennel. We'll be meeting at the dog kennel. So we probably should have some more information to report out of the next board meeting with the results.
I'm going to go -- what's their -- we have a lot of people here for our fire discussions, so is that all right? If we just go straight to that? We'll come back and approve our invoice for after that. Thanks for coming, everybody. Bruce and I have spent the past couple of weeks meeting with each of our departments. I've had a lot of one-on-one meetings with the mayor. The village has come to us with a proposal that they have not yet to more than the -- I have led you to the board member to -- so we've also compromised. We're at a stalemate here with our contract with the village for fire protection coverage capability portion of the town is pretty simple. It's instead of the 187 of our infant contracts, we can offer $160,000 for this year. They're asking for a five-year contract with $10,000 per year escalation, so we'd end up in 2018 theoretically with paying $200,000. Also, there would be 90 days to cancel the contract. And the agreement that we would be moving to form one district. We dissolved the village fire district and have the town fire protection district encompassed. So the town portion of the village's town fire protection district and the village fire district would be one new district, one new company. And the reason for that is that the town residents in the district would have representation through electing commissioners, and the village would be out of the fire business and the town wouldn't have to be needing on raises anyway. We've also met the Hillside and Rhine Cliff and asked them to take on each of their portion of their fire protection districts under their taxation. So again, it won't go through us any longer. They would be adding the fire protection districts to their territory. Both of these, all of this would have to be done through a series of local laws, and we have to get our attorney involved. We have to dissolve each district and create a new one. And descriptions, and I believe that the dissolution is -- I'm waiting for confirmation from our attorney. I believe the dissolution is subject to a presid referendum, but the creation of a new district will be on the table. So it's something that we're here to discuss. We'll go back to each fire department and see what they've decided at the next meeting to best of their power of years to represent the area. And I just wanted to speak about this publicly and get input from everybody.
Hey, I've spent a northern amount of time going, crawling through all the data and everything and talking to different people. And basically where I'm at with this is fire protection, I believe, should be based on the value of the tax property. So I think everybody that's covered by one company should be paying the same rate that's determined by that company, and it should be based on the value of the property that you have. It should be subsidized by somebody else. I think it's, just like everything else we do, it's based on what you pay your taxes on, the value of your property. That's where I'm at. I think any of the numbers that have been thrown around, any of the different things that have been thrown around are interesting. They've got a lot of potential flaws in them. And I think that when the fire company sets the budget and the taxpayers get fairly and equally taxed for that budget, then that's the right thing for Rhinebeck.
You know, from where I'm sitting, as chief financial officer of the town, I'm on the board, I would love -- excuse me. Fred, I think we're having sound issues. Are you hearing buzz feedback? Like that?
Oh.
Maybe it's this.
Don't see anything, though.
Just unplug it. Hello? Okay, that's good. It would be great, I believe, it would be the best thing for all the taxpayers to have one fire department and everybody paying one rate. But that's above our pay grade. You know, that's up to the three departments. And I realize and respect that there's different cultures and a lot of history for the three And I'm hoping that by at least creating this new district with the village and their portion of the fire protection district with one tax rate, that maybe that opens the door in the future for other departments, when it's right for them, to, you know, decide to do that. If not, at least there are three different districts being administered by people who are elected to do that. And the residents in our fire protection district don't have representation in the village, and the village is running the budget. So that's not okay with me. So I think this achieves a lot. It gets the village board, the village trustees, out of the fire protection district, and it creates one tax rate for everybody in the village fire department. I would like to, you know, see the fire department running itself as Hillside and Rhine Cliff does. And as I said, we'll go back to Hillside and Rhine Cliff and see what they've decided. We proposed it at their last company-wide meetings, and we'll go back next time and see where we are. Does anybody have any questions for us, or is there any discussion you would like to have?
Well, long run, I think probably creating one district is best that if Hillside and Rhine Cliff don't want to be part of it, maybe the village and the protective district. I think there is a difference in view as to how long that may take. We've gotten some advice that it can be accomplished relatively fast. I'm not sure that the village trustees are that optimistic that it can happen so fast, but my understanding of the village's proposal is they will work in good faith with us to try to form the one district, either all fire companies or the village and the town protective district.
Joe, I just want to make clear that Hillside and Rhine Cliff have not agreed to form one district, and it's not up to us. It's up to the department.
Right. I understand that. They may change their mind, but whether they change their mind or not, we still can form a district with the village and the village fire protection district. As to the time it will take, none of us really know. My understanding is that the village proposal is that they will work toward that. I assume in good faith they will work toward that. It seems the most sensible approach because you're letting the taxpayers decide, and the combined operation will be run by the fire department itself, subject to voters. But I think we got to do something in the interim until that happens. And, you know, for that reason, I would move ahead. I think we should sit down with the village trustees and talk through the various points of their proposal, see where there is a difference, if any. I think some of us feel that they want to see some more documentation. We should put that on the table as to what documentation specifically we want to see. But I think the time has come for us to reach a compromise.
Just, I want to be clear that whatever the budget is that the village poses, I'm okay with that. All the other things that we don't know about clearly in the budget, the administrative fees and things like that, as long as it's based on value, on taxable value, not an arbitrary figure. That's where I am. I just want to be clear, Joe. Sorry. As far as the -- I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, could you please come up? Anyone who would like to comment, please.
I'm Darren Forbes. I'm a 33-year member of the fire departments in Rhinebeck. I was past chief of Hillside. I was the member down there for 30 years. I'm currently the assistant chief in Rhinebeck. I've been here for over three years, almost four years. Logistically, we've talked about having a new fire district and making the village a fire district. Logistically, it's a nightmare. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. The village owns all the equipment. The village owns a firehouse. Where would we come up with money to start a district in order to purchase equipment? Where would we come up with a new firehouse? Or would they lease it to us? Or how would that occur? Those are all things that we have to be thought about. You know, there's a lot involved in starting a new district, a lot of startup costs, too. I don't disagree, there should be one district in this town because we can consolidate equipment, and it would be less costly, and more manpower would be available to help, you know, at the initial notice as opposed to mutual aid, which would be great. So, I mean, there's a lot of thoughts to put into this. And just by saying we can do it, it's very difficult to do.
Well, there's precedent for merging and creating new districts. So we would definitely, you know, it would be a cost that I would hope the town and the village would share, and we would hire an expert to help guide us through. I also saw, you know, Mark Molinaro this weekend. Buy for a grant, we'll help you, but...
There are grants available.
Yes, there are grants.
And then...
But at this point, you know, I want to be clear again. We're talking about just the village and the village's portion of the fire.
Understood, and I am too. However, it's ultimately, it would be great to have one district. Starting a district, coming away from a village, is tough to do. We do have representatives in FASD in New York State that do know about that. They know about consolidation. Consolidation's big in New York State.
Yes.
The governor's all for consolidation, including highway departments. So, I mean, it's doable, but it's a lot of work. So, okay, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darren, while you're up there, can I ask you? I never got a chance to ask a question. One of the things we talked about was the potential to charge for transportation with ambulance service. And for the combined village and protective district, it's roughly $80,000 a year conservatively coming in. And this was brought to us by Brad Pinsky, the attorney that was hired. And basically what they're saying is the Medicare and no-fault situations, they pay that anyway, and they'll do that. It's not out of pocket to the person because they're hitting their things.
Are you talking about the municipalities charging for ambulance service?
Yeah.
Creating an ambulance department.
What, with all, based on all of your experience, what pitfalls are there with that, do you know? I know the pros are more money, but...
I'm not, I'm an officer with the ambulance corps. I am an EMT, but I don't know. I mean, there are those that can't afford it. I mean, they do pay taxes. Do they have the right to have an ambulance service? We've had one for many, many years.
Yeah, but this is just Medicare and no-fault we're talking about.
Right. And then Medicare and no-fault are changing, too. I mean, no-fault not so much, but Medicare is definitely changing.
Yeah.
I mean, they're cutting back on what they're paying for. So, I mean, Ed Murray would be a good one to speak to about the cost for that, what the payback is.
We've met with him.
I'm just looking through you.
Yeah, no, I really don't have any knowledge of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
The, for Rhine Cliff, some of you, I promised you the rates if you consolidated, if you adopted your protective district, the tax district, which is now 33 cents, and the would, that would go up to 55 cents. And the other part, which is currently 37 cents, which, what is really funding $1.40 for that part of Rhine Cliff, would come in at the 55 cents. So you would go from 33 to 55.
For what?
Per thousand.
Per thousand?
Yeah. From 33 to 55. And again, you got to watch the $1.40, which is the subsidy coming from the rest of the protective district. For Hillside, I think I gave you the number, but it was, your taxed area is 48 cents and the protective is 37. When you consolidate it, it would come out 52. So the, yeah, those are the numbers.
Do we come to what first?
52 cents. 48 and 37 would go to 52. Again, that, the protective district is subsidized by the rest of it. When the, if the village and the protective district merged, the village is 26 cents and the protective district is 37, it would go to 36 or 26 because of the bigger value being in the protective district. So it would stay flat at 26.
I'm sorry, the village is currently paying...
26.
So the village residents pay 26 cents per mill?
Yeah, and it's 37 for the protective district for that.
So the new levy would be, so it would go down for the town residents a little bit?
Right. But that also says that if you needed...
You could go up.
You could go up if you needed to.
Could you do a mill rate for the whole town if we draw one district?
Yeah.
What would that be?
It was about 30 cents.
Okay.
But again, you know, that's for another day.
Yeah.
You know, we've met with the chief, we've met with all the trustees, our commissioners in the village. For us, it's most important that there's representation for the people in the fire protection district because they're taxed. And we don't really want to be in the position of running a fire department or negotiating for unexpected fees and raises that we have to tax for. It's a burden for the taxpayers, so it would be best if it's run by an elected board of commissioners, and that's what we're hoping to do.
One other comment is the protective district is really scary. We didn't know anything about it, really, as town board members, and I'm sorry, but we didn't. And it looks like it was created before Sandy turned your place into what it is now and before the Mavis was across the street. And so it was divvied up at some point with some logic, but since then, the development in the town has not mapped to that. So that's why we get the Hillside and Rhine Cliff not being able to support the protective district. They don't have enough tax base to support what they get for the tax district and the, or the protective district, and the rest of it being so big. So it's another can of worms that we wish we hadn't gotten into.
You know, the compromise is a way for us to move on and work with the village, to take the budget insecurity away from the village, them not knowing what we're doing. Most important to us is to make sure that each of the three fire departments remain healthy, physically healthy, and, you know, with their volunteers. And, you know, we know what we're getting. We know how dedicated they are, and we know how they, you know, they're helping. We know that you all survive from mutual aid, so you've got to be able to, you know, give it and receive it. We have three fire departments that help each other out here. You know, and whether we're paying too much or not enough, a compromise sort of puts this behind us and lets us move ahead to work on the difficult issue of creating one new district, which may not be, I hope we'll get that difficult. Have an attorney who does it regularly, and there's formulas for this. So that's, I think, our goal. And I think it's something that we'll talk about again in August, and we will vote on it in August. But I think we sort of want to hold it forward, see where we are. We can give the village an idea. The village is going to need to. Good luck, guys, to vote on this. So we don't have a resolution tonight, but I think a temperature taking so that, you know, we can call the mayor and let him know where we are. Nice is here. You know, are we inclined to accept this offer and work with the village towards creating this new district?
I am.
The way it's proposed, I'm not. I believe that it should... I believe that it should be, whatever the amount is, all-inclusive for the fire company, I believe it should be cut by tax value and done that way.
So, you mean, put into place immediately rates that reflect one levy?
Yeah, yeah, because it's, and it includes everything, the administrative, anything that Joe or anybody else thinks belongs in fire, no matter where it is in the budget, add it all up and then figure out what the mil rate is for that and go from that. That's how I would go.
So, you would compromise...
I don't care about the amount, I care about the equity.
So, maybe we can go to them and say, "Instead of a hard amount for this year, we'll base it on the tax levy of the property?"
Yeah, based on what their true budget, what they want, need in their budget. If they say it's two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand or three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, it doesn't matter. We know what the split is and that's the amount that we should do it. That's what I think.
Now, Bruce, are you talking about two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and fifteen or both?
I'm talking about two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen, and, you know, down the road, as far as I'm concerned, once we get to that point, then it's the fire company that's setting the budget and the split.
You know, again, we've been offered a deal of, not a deal, the compromise on the table is, we have one forty-six, one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars budgeted this year, one hundred and forty-one, sorry, budgeted for this year for our town taxes for the fire protection district. The interim contract is at one eighty-seven or one eighty-nine, one eighty-seven, one eighty-nine. So, one sixty for this year, one seventy for next year. It's a five-year contract, hopefully when I'm saying, the end of that contract, we'll be able to consolidate the districts before then. You know, and I think that we need to put this behind us and work with the village. I'm inclined to take it. I agree with you about, you know, the levy rate, but I think that's done after we, you know, as soon as we get this in place, which hopefully can be done in time for next year.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
The two thousand and fourteen budget that we have right now, the levy rate, the way we have it is the same.
Is what?
Is the same for the protective district and the village. I do not understand why we would stray from that.
Well, and it's going to be, once there's a single district between the two, they'll be the same then, too. So, we ought to keep it the same.
That's the point.
I agree with you.
So, what's the number if it's the same? What is the number for us if it's the same?
Well, we don't know, we, we're working to what we've seen in the budget, what we understand, but we believe there's more that we need to cover, right, than what we know. So, we don't know the right amount right now. The way it is right now, we're, with the numbers we're working with, we're one hundred and sixty-seven dollars off, so...
Sixty-seven.
So, you're talking just about what the village calls the fire department.
Yeah, and I'm saying, Joe, I'm saying, whatever it is more that we need to get, we get. And take that a big number and then divide that by the values.
The village has told us ad nauseam for the last six months that what is in their budget under a title fire department really is not all their costs.
And I'm saying, give us all the costs and divide it by the cost of it.
I think they've told us that. I don't know what that number would work out. Where I am is, I'm inclined to accept it, but I think we ought to sit down with the village trustees. If you want to work up numbers as to what it would be if we did it based on value, do it. But I think we got to move ahead with this, that we know they don't have an inclusive number in their budget which says fire department cost, but they've told us that and they said, "You've got to take some administrative costs," and they're saying, "Divide that in half the cost of running their municipal building." And they say we ought to pay that, they have a number for that, so...
But, Joe, I completely agree with you. I say total it all up, I'm fine with that, but I'm saying it's not based on one year's percentage of calls or, because two thousand and thirteen is a baseline year, the protective district was higher than the village, but in previous years, the village was always higher. I'm saying we don't use that, we use the value of the property, and we're done with it.
Let's see what that number is. I'm not, you know, we've always been talking about calls.
Yeah, that's why...
I don't know if calls are better than assessed value or assessed value are better than calls.
But once the district is consolidated, it'll just be assessed value, won't be having, the calls will be...
This is an interim...
Right, I assume that.
This is not, this is an interim agreement that we're looking at. We're going to either accept a number or not, and we're going to move ahead. You know, if you're advocating more looking, I think, you know, I think it's a slippery slope. I think we've been looking since, come on up, Henry.
Just to clarify, I'm not advocating more looking. If Bruce wants to come back with some numbers...
Bruce doesn't want to do anything. Bruce is just telling you that Bruce has looked at it and thinks that the village will make it, and I'm a village resident, thinks that the village would probably make out better if it went on value rather than calls, but...
Hi, my name's Henry Campbell. I'm a resident of the town and also a member of the Rhinebeck Fire Department, and I'm not going to get into this stuff because we know where we stand on this, myself and the board. But I'm sort of disheartened tonight. If it was a public meeting and the public was invited, I'm disheartened by the fact that no one from the public is here to speak for or against, or maybe I thought there was someone in the public who might have had a better idea than all of us, but apparently that's not so. So, I look at that and I read it two ways. I read it as if to say, one, we're not interested, or two, they're saying, "Stop the bull and pay the bill." Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joe, I'm a resident of Rhine Cliff, I'm a member of the Rhine Cliff Fire Company.
I'm sorry, Joe, what's your last name?
Bear, Joe Bear. If we want to talk about fairness, I'd say, you know, if the budget is a hundred thousand dollars and there's a thousand houses in that area, then each one should pay a thousand dollars because it costs as much to save that house as it does this house, where the people in the hamlet of Rhine Cliff probably are assessed at a much higher rate than the people in the protective district. I think that's probably why the rates per thousand were figured more for the protective district than for the hamlet of Rhine Cliff, because they tried to even it out so that everybody paid the same share for fire protection. It's not six of one and half a dozen of the other, but if we're going to discuss fairness, then I think, and you want everybody to pay an equal share, then let's divide it by the number of properties that need to be protected and each person pay an equal share. That would be my thought in terms of how you do it fairly.
Should a house that's assessed at two hundred thousand pay the same amount as a house that's assessed at two million?
Well, we seem to be, you know, again, this is why I think they came up with separate rates. The house that's assessed at two million, if it's out in the protective district, is probably able to pay more than the house that's two hundred thousand in the district. The houses tend to be assessed more, but they tend to be smaller and older and probably more flammable than a lot of the houses in the protective district, which I think are newer and probably for the most part are better.
So, just let me give you some numbers for that. For the village, there's twelve-hundred-and-forty-five parcels. For, in the protective district, the village parcels are part of it, there's twelve-hundred-and-seventy-six. So, there's twenty-nine different, so it's like thirty. As far as value goes, taxable value, it's three-hundred-and-eighty million in the village and five-hundred-and-fourteen million in the protective district. So, for the same number of parcels, essentially, you've got a little over a hundred and thirty million difference in taxable value. That, that's...
Bruce, let's talk about Rhine Cliff specifically. You know, here's the...
I always thought you were Vincent, right?
So, we want to talk about what the taxation rate is here and what it takes in here to augment this. And there are a lot fewer parcels here than here, a lot of low values.
Okay, um, we got to walk over there.
A big stage, a big stage.
Do we actually have an ability to tax people based on per house or per lot?
On a what?
Let's just keep that out if that's the problem.
The only ability we have to tax is based on assessed value, not on per lot or per...
Yes, you're correct.
So, I mean, while what you're proposing sounds reasonable, I don't think there's a way to do it.
I didn't say that. I was just...
Well, unfortunately...
Well, even in terms of fairness, and I guess it's an academic discussion, do you charge a parcel that has no house on it, that's just an open field, the same as a parcel that has a house on it?
Or one that's got a shed and not a house. I mean, it's all moot because we can't do it anyway.
Okay, back to this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so this part up here, according to our assessor's office, is, has a value of forty-four million dollars plus change. It requires sixty-two thousand dollars in support coming in from the protective district. It pays sixteen thousand eight, or five-hundred-and-thirty dollars. That's how much tax is taken out of it. So, sixteen thousand coming out is a fun sixty-two thousand. So, you have a deficit of forty-five thousand dollars there. So, where does that come from? Remember before I told you that this was five hundred million out here? This, that forty-something thousand subsidy comes from here from those over there because this piece, this piece, and this piece and this piece, they're all taxed at the same rate because they're part of the protective district and it's a big pool. Okay? As far as your tax district, it looks like right now your taxing has a value of a hundred and seventy-one million. It needs about fifty-six, fifty-seven percentage-wise in your budget if you split it by value because you would slam those together anyway. And its tax rate is thirty-three percent, or thirty-three cents, and there's no deficit there because you tax whatever you need to tax for that. So, what we have as a board, an administrative protective district, is we have this part that we can't tax enough to pay what we're paying. And that's part of the problem. If you take this over, and you can set whatever taxes you want that are reasonable for your company, and you're not, it doesn't, you're not going to get subsidized from the rest of it anymore. See, what happens is if we pay you sixty-two thousand dollars, we took that out, say forty thousand, we took that out, then everybody's taxes will go down a little bit for mutuals compared to the... That's the... It's also... The lines of this would go up. Right, right, and that, those were the numbers I gave before, that it would go from up to fifty-five cents. Two thousand. Can I answer your question?
Thank you.
All right, yeah. While we're talking about fire boundaries, a lot of the lots on that are in two different districts at the same time, which makes zero sense. I mean, my property is in both Rhine Cliff and Hillside. I think one building is, I have two buildings, one building's in one district, one building's in the other, but the only way to get to either one of them is through the driveway off Mill Road. So, it's ridiculous to have two different fire departments come, and I'm paying taxes to both districts. So, if you look at the district divisions, they don't match anything at all in terms of sense relative to lot lines. If we do any kind of redistricting, it would be nice to straighten out some of the lines.
Oh, those lines made some good use of them.
I know, I mean, but I could argue that even a hundred or two hundred years ago, they didn't make sense. For instance, Hillside and Rhine Cliff have, the boundary runs parallel to the riverbank near, on the riverside of Mill Road, for instance. So, I mean, it's crazy. Anyway.
Heinz, did you want to say something?
Yeah. I'm Heinz Sauer, I'm a village resident, I'm a trustee, and today I'm also acting mayor. So, all our crews is out. We've gone through the third or fourth iteration here of this proposal that we have done. And here we are about to take another variation of the theme, and I think it's time that we sit down and put this thing together and put it to bed for a while. We need to work on putting a, a, a district. I think it was just not reasonable, you know, constantly come up with new ideas and playing, you know, new scenarios and so on. We can go on and on and on with this. We're just about bottom lining, and bottom, you know, so I think we can probably get the votes we put on this thing here, and I hope you will...
I think we can, I think, I hope we can, too.
I think we can.
Yeah, I think we're all, you know, we had to educate ourselves when this was dropped on us last year. We didn't really know that much about any of this, and I think we're pretty educated now. And I think that we, you know, Henry, to your point, you know, time to just pay the bill, we had to do our fiduciary due diligence, that's why we're here, is to look at every angle. I think we need to compromise, I think we need to shake hands, and I think we need to work to create one district, set the table, maybe the other fire departments will want to come in at some point when it's right for them.
But as Darren Forbes said, it's going to take some time, so we got to do something in the interim.
Well, the interim...
And I think, the interim, maybe not this year, but till this gets done, and, you know, it is complicated putting these two things together. So, it's going to take some time.
Are you, are you in favor of accepting the proposed compromise?
I would.
As is?
I would, yes.
And working with the village to create one new district?
Yep, that's part of their proposal. And part of their proposal is they're going to furnish us with numbers and whatever data we ask for, understanding that's all part of this proposal, so I would accept it, and I think we ought to sit down and start working out a contract. I'm there.
And Alan?
I agree with Joe, and you haven't heard anything I disagree with.
Well, there you have it, Heinz. I think it's something we'll vote on in August, we, you know, want a resolution ready. I think you guys need to vote on it at your next meeting to propose it to us. I think that's what I talked to Heath about. I talked to Heath last week when he was in Fort Dix, I saw him this weekend, and I told him if the meeting didn't go too late, I'd call him tomorrow.
Does it make sense to start working on a draft contract?
I think we have, I think we have the proposal as the draft contract.
Well, proposal is in the air and an email. It's not a contract, you know, but...
I think we...
Unless we, unless we have a draft, that's the place to start.
I'll ask the mayor or the acting mayor today, how would you handle it? Would you come to us with a proposal, I mean, with a, with a contract that outlines this proposal and in our next meeting we would sign it? proposal, and in our next meeting we would sign it? Is that how you, could you come up to the microphone? Is that how you think you guys would like to proceed?
Yes.
Sounds good. So-
We will come with you with a-
Great.
A contract saying, you know, a hundred and sixty for this year, one seventy for next year, ten thousand, five-year contract, ninety days to cancel. We work immediately towards consolidating the district, creating a new district.
We have our board meeting on the twenty-second of July. We had to postpone it because of very few, various people weren't here, so we'll work on that.
Thank you. Any of the other fire departments here, could you please come up?
Thank you. Jim Burden, resident of the village of Rhinebeck, former mayor. As you're all aware, we had looked at this consolidation effort of the three fire companies several years ago. Wayne Reif and I, Reifenberg and I had talked about it, and we moved forward on it. Henry was part of that process. Andy Williams was part of that process. We had the people from Patterns for Progress come in. Commissioners from Hillside participated. Commissioners from Rhine Cliff participated. And unfortunately, it didn't move forward. I think what I want to say here tonight is congratulate you guys for all the work you have done getting this interim thing worked out where, you know, the contract can be put in place between the village and the town. But I think what I want to leave everybody with is that everybody, I think, needs to just stop and think and look at the big picture here. And what this should all be about is providing the best possible service for the people of this community. And no matter history and no matter turf and the fact that we have three companies, what we need to do is bring people together at the table and figure out what can be done going forward in the future to provide the best possible service for the residents of this community. And, you know, that turf thing needs to go away. There needs to be a meeting of the minds. And people have to be reasonable, and people have to say, "Look, this is what's best for the community. Let's do it, and let's get it over with." Thank you.
Thanks. Well, you know, I will, as long as I'm the supervisor, keep working for that, but I'm very respectful of the three companies, and I have a better sense of personalities for the different companies. And as I said, I think if we have this one district, we're setting a table, and we're leaving the door open. You know, things change. Demographics change. Firefighters seem to be getting, getting older, and I don't know that we have new memberships. Another thing we'd like to support is low SAP for the volunteers. That could get newer volunteers in. And we, we keep talking and absolutely encourage it, but that's, you know, that's not up to us. That's sort of like, that's up to the fire departments, but absolutely keep talking. You know, and one thing I'm very mindful of is mutual aid. This mutual aid that, you know, the two fire departments in the town and the village give, and all the other fire departments around here, that's what enables these volunteer fire departments in this rural area to survive, you know, and we're lucky that we get mutual aid and we give it. So, you know, we'll keep talking to Hillside and Rhine Cliff, but ultimately, the decision is up to them, and I respect that. The biggest thing for me is to get equal representation from my town representatives in the village, so that there's a, there's a parity in taxation rate. And, you know, that's where I'm coming from. So I think we have an agreement here too on this compromise, and I'm happy for that. Henry, did you want to come up?
No, I thought you were done, and I was just going to say thank you.
You're going to leave? I could be done.
I just wanted to say thank you for going on with the compromise. You know, as Joe said, it's been a long six or seven months here.
We had a lot to learn, you know, and thank you for all your help.
Okay, you're welcome.
Good night.
Thank you again.
Well, let me just make one last comment. Not only do we have a lot to learn, I think the trustees also had a lot to learn.
Everybody's got a lot to learn.
It was a mutual learning experience.
The day you stop learning is the day you die. Okay.
I think we're good here. Rhine Cliff, thank you for coming. Hillside, thank you for coming. We'll be in touch with you gentlemen, you know, hopefully attend the next commissioner's meeting to see what you've decided. I hope you decide to take on your portion of the fire protection district. If not, I, you know, it won't be, it won't be existing anymore, so please do take it over, you know, if we consolidate the village, so we'll be speaking-
I didn't understand that.
If the village and the village's portion of the fire protection district become one district, I'm saying I hope Hillside takes their portion and Rhine Cliff takes their portion, because then we're going to have to administer only for two little districts.
Oh, okay, but you didn't-
Yeah, then we'd have no fire protection district anymore.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, we're trying to get commissioners to oversee districts, not a town board, not a village board, and keep the three fire departments healthy and, you know, vibrant and successful as we move on. So thanks. Thank you for coming. I had to think, fire protection, we can get on here? Tab number one may have a motion for resolution 2014-268 approving our preliminary accounts payable act's distraction, the amount of nine, ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion for our resolution 2014-269 approving our contract with Bell copiers?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is the first time we've seen this. It's our yearly service contract. Okay, I remember this from last year. Four hundred and fifty-six dollars. This is the court. This is the court copier. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion for resolution 2014-270 approving our preliminary capital projects abstract in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. It's tab number three.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I have a motion for a resolution 2014-271 approving the bid for the repair of the town hall stairs.
Motion.
And a second? Second.
The only caveat with this is it's got to go to Warren for review.
That would be the discussion part.
That it has to what? Bruce, I didn't hear what you said.
Has to go to Warren for review.
Bruce, will you forward it to us, the liaison?
I asked, I asked Bobby to have Rochelle do it.
Okay, you'll follow up on that, this will go to Warren. You mean for a procurement policy?
The wording of the, the bid needs to be, because it's, at this point, it's becoming a public works issue, it needs to be worded.
Okay. So we will send this to Warren. I think we need a motion to amend this resolution.
It's normal, I don't think we need a motion. I think we just need to-
Send it.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion for resolution 2014-272 approving a hire for recreation department?
Motion.
And a second? Second. Any discussion? Want to just tell us?
Yeah, we had one, one of the swim team coaches quit, so this is hiring another one to replace that one.
In a concession stand. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We had an update on the Thompson Maserela Park artifacts. Nancy was supposed to be here at eight, but we've moved along so quickly that I'd like to talk about it now. We can talk about it again next month if we like. And I, I think that our, oh, let's go, we have one more, oh, we have some-
Yeah, you have two more.
We have other stuff.
The town hall phone system.
Yes. Whoa. Okay.
Local law.
And the local law, yeah, the property violations. Let's go to that, and then we'll come back to, um, we have a phone system that was purchased in nineteen ninety-nine for about eighty-four hundred dollars. The life of a phone system is sort of akin to a computer, you know, a computer system. We've been having multiple system failures, and the failures have been increasing. Time between the failures has been getting shorter too. We often have, you know, a day with several hours or a full day when people can't get through because the phone system's down. So we've been getting technicians out here, and they're saying, "It's time, you've got to replace the phone system." We, the current one is from Lucent Technology through a company called Manchester. They are also the current vendor of the state bid, and they have given us a price for seventy-nine hundred and fifty dollars for our whole, to replace our whole town phone system. I think it's probably something that we're going to have to do before next year, because every week we're down a day or a couple hours, and it's not fixable. So I leave this with you. I'll put this, talking, Elaine, just the phone system's failing. We're going to need to replace it. When you call a phone town hall and it's busy, and you can't get through for hours, it's because the phone system's down. So we've been advised by our technicians, it's nineteen ninety-nine, what is that, fifteen years? It's time to replace it. Seventy-nine fifty, seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. We're going to have to move on this, I believe, before January. So I'll put this, I'll have Joan put this Avaya IP Office solution in your box if anyone wants to-
I'd like to take a look at it.
Look at it. We have, can go off state contract and get a new-
I've been victimized by phone systems before.
Yeah, it's a big phone jacking.
I would assume new system will have, like every other town that I call, a series of numbers that you can push if you want this department and that department, and, you know, frankly, we've been talking about a new phone system, I think, for over a year, so it really is time we actually move and do something on the phone. So I would be in favor of it.
Wow.
All right.
He's in a spending mood.
I think he's been on the other end of the, on the, this evening line.
Sometimes patience wears thin. I think we ought to move on a number of other things, including mining. I don't know, I won't go into it, but that's-
We have our draft, we've all given our comments.
That's an issue.
We'll get that on the next agenda. Great, I think we have, John, you can let Joan know, I think we have some agreement here to move on the phone system, so I'll get that on the next agenda. Pass this out to you guys. Elaine, any, any further discussion on the town hall phone system? Okay. Elaine, you have something on here for local law solutions to property violations. Do we have a tab here? No. Did I remember? Yeah, you sent-
Yeah, and unfortunately, I'm so sorry, I didn't bring, I have the copies that Warren had sent with the drafts from Pine Plains and the other, but I don't have it with me, so I can't refer to it. But just to back up and give you some history about this, I got a phone call from a constituent when I first started my term in January, and she said that the property where she lives on three oh eight, and I won't mention names, it wouldn't be a nice thing to do, but her neighbor has a lot of trash and, like, machinery in his yard. And she feels like it hurts her, the value of her home, and that she has to see this inordinate amount of trash, and there's, like, animals running wild on the property, and just, and I did go by the property, and I took some pictures just so we could see as a board, you know, what this looks like. And she asked the question, you know, is there anything that can be done? I was new in my term, I still am, and so my question was, "I don't know, but I'll look into it for you," which is exactly what I did. And so I asked, I, I've brought it up before to the board in executive session when other things were talked about with the attorney, who had mentioned at the time that there are other townships that have implemented local ordinances that address the issue when, when it's a nebulous area of the property maintenance code, if it, if it can't be followed, for whatever reasons. Either it's not clear enough what the enforcement policy is, or there's no enforcement policy.
Talking about with regard to zoning.
Yeah. And so he said that these other towns that had a similar problem adopted this local ordinance, and that he would be able to draft something for us too. And I'm not suggesting that this is necessarily the way to go, but I thought it was an opportunity for discussion about how the board feels in, in terms of how we can address this issue. I can say, as, just as a resident who, who cares about my property, that I'm sure I would find an excessive amount of garbage and large pieces of equipment and other things in my neighbor's yard a little troubling. I mean, if you put flowers out, or you care about your home, or, you know, you, it does matter which, which your neighbors, how, how your neighbors live. Whether or not that's something that we should address and how is a question I wanted to put to the whole board, just to get a temperature check, to see how everybody feels about this issue more generally, or what, if anything, the board can or should or should not do to address this.
I read the two laws from, it's Pine Plains and Gallatin, or-
I think it is Gallatin, the second one.
And they were basically, um, maintenance, local laws regarding maintenance, about keeping your grass mowed, not having abandoned cars, refrigerators, stoves. You know, I have a property in my neighborhood that has a lot of treasures in it, you know, some, but abandoned things, and I just kind of shrug and drive by. So this would be, we have, our zoning law disallows this, but it's difficult to enforce the zoning law. So this would be, this is a, a way to enforce this under a home maintenance law? Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I know, because there are some chronic offenders, and we've talked about prosecuting, it's difficult to prosecute.
Right, right, exactly. And I know, you know, I did talk to Michael Trimble about it very briefly on email, or it might even have been in person when we saw each other at the meeting over the planning. And he said that there are other properties that have the same problem, and that he felt like this would actually be helpful for the town to have. So I don't know if we want to have further discussions with Michael about the extent of the problem. I mean, obviously, if, you know, one person is complaining about something, it may not be a pervasive issue that requires intervention. But, but if there is something on the books and there's no way to enforce it, it seems to make sense to me that we should have an enforcement mechanism for anything on our books-
More.
Outside of this particular issue, so.
My own view is probably town law already covers it, you have another law, it's confusion. I think with that particular property, one of the issues is whether it's a farm or not, and farms are exempted from our zoning law. I guess in principle, I just don't like the idea of town board members getting involved in issues like this. We have a zoning enforcement officer. That person should be enforcing the law to the best of their ability, and if they think that there's a need for a new law, which I would be very surprised that this thing that we paid a million and a half dollars doesn't for, doesn't cover it.
But I think the point is they haven't been able to do anything about it. They've tried, it's gone to court, and I think you should probably have a discussion with Michael, because I think, given what he does-
And we have a new zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
Right, right. But do you think that's going to help, the fact that there's no, nothing on the books that helps to enforce these laws?
Well, you say-
That seems to be the, the, the problem, the underlying problem, is the enforcement mech, issue.
You say there's nothing on the books. I'm not sure that's correct.
Well, would you then like to speak to both Warren and Michael, just to find out what the history is?
I'd be happy. I spoke to Michael on NOSIM about this particular property on-
Because it's a farm.
Three oh eight, and the question is whether it's a farm or not, and you want to-
Well, that particular property, but I'm talking about the bigger issue, that Michael had said that there were other properties that have a similar issue, and that he thought having a local ordinance would be helpful. Maybe just have the discussion with him, so you can get a sense of why he would think that this might be a good thing. He's going to have more experience. I just have the phone call from one constituent, you know, but if Michael's saying that there are other issues that this would cover and be helpful, I think it would be worth it to have a conversation with him.
I will do so.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce, any thoughts?
Um, I think this all comes down to the person downstairs, whether they're willing to go out and do it. The laws are there as far as I'm concerned.
But, so you don't see a problem with the enforcement?
Yeah, I do, but I, I think it's, it's an individual, it's not a, um...
My understanding though is it's something in the law that's not...
I don't think so. I, I think we've had conflict of interest when we talked about this, but you can get another, different attorneys. I think the laws are there and I think they're adequate. I think it's just execution on our part.
I think the discussion with Michael will be useful because I, I don't, that wasn't the impression I got from him.
That's fine. I was, I was around.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. And I'm only saying this because I haven't been and I have the least amount of experience. All I know is that I got this phone call and then when Michael said that to me, I thought, huh. You know, I haven't heard anything else about this being a problem, but Michael's been doing this for a very long time. So if he has, to me, there's, you know, there's something more to it that we should be at least looking into.
Alan?
I don't know enough to have a, an opinion on this. I'd like to hear more about what's not being covered.
Well, um, Elaine, will you put the copies of the laws at everybody's box?
Sure, I will.
In email?
Yep.
Um, you know, I'm of two minds. I believe the laws are on the books and it's an enforcement issue. The laws also had, I think, um, were in there about keeping your grass trimmed, you know, there were very specific things. Um, I'll talk to our zoning enforcement officer and get his opinion.
And Michael, I think it's important to talk to Michael too, if you're gonna, maybe talk to them together. I wouldn't mind being part of that conversation myself, to tell you the truth, just to get a better understanding of the scope of the problem.
Sure.
Okay.
I, I think you bring up a very interesting point, and, and I think that point is, is that perhaps when Michael was the interim CEO, he, he formed certain opinions, but as a planning board chair, he should, I don't think he should be weighing in on this.
It's a, it's...
And I think that we have to be very careful that we maintain the proper segregation and authority of the different positions in this town and not blur them together.
Right, but he was CEO for a while, right? He was the interim?
He was the interim CEO and now we have a CEO, so we really should keep him planning.
So maybe he should debrief Ron Angev- eventually to them.
I don't think Ron needs debriefing. He understands our code.
Oh, no, I, I understand that, but I'm saying where Michael saw the problems were, where Michael, because Michael seemed to think there was a larger problem and maybe it was while he was doing the zoning enforcement. So I think it would be helpful for Ron, frankly, to talk to Michael. It certainly can't hurt, and he was in the zoning enforcement officer position for a little while and seems to have an opinion about this particular issue, so...
I think what Bruce is saying, is saying, is that it's almost a conflict to have a planning board chair.
I'm not suggesting he get involved with the issue. I'm suggesting he give him the past history of his experience as a zoning officer that led him to say to me that he thinks this might be a good idea for other reasons because there are other properties that he's come across that have been in similar violations that he felt he couldn't do anything about. So I'm just talking about getting debriefed on the history, not going forward, getting involved, but just bringing him up to speed with his experience.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, I guess we're, um, we're up to our last day. Uh, should we wait, see if Nancy's gonna come, we'll just talk about it?
We'll just talk about, oh, we'll talk about...
Oh, come on up.
Sure.
Brad, can you stop? We're, we're buzzing again. How was it? Was it, was it...
It's good to sound, so...
No, no, it was, uh, uh, malfunction of the house, ask your home. Uh, I just...
False alarm?
Well, it was an actual alarm, but it was not a fire.
Good thing.
It's a good thing, yes. They do, they do a great job. They're taking care of the people, you know, they get them, they evacuate them and do everything that are... Uh, I just want to take a minute of your time to thank you all for your hard work. Uh, this has been an enormous undertaking and as well as the village trustees. Uh, but I got word that you had, you know, come to a little closer resolution while we were out on the call. And I know people have taken a lot of time to try to settle this, so I just want to take a minute to thank you all for that. And hopefully, you know, we can get this settled and move on to the bigger picture and, you know, get some other stuff going on. Um, as far as the district, um, I, I don't think it's a bad idea. Um, I, I just, I don't want to see it rushed into, you know, I mean, I, I know there is some thoughts that it can be done really quickly and it probably can, but as, as long as we take enough time to iron out all the kinks so that we don't go back later on and say, uh-oh, maybe we did that too fast. Not, not the whole operation, but maybe a, a facet of it. Um, but this has been done before in the state, so I, you know, fortunately, we're not the guinea pigs, um, so we have a lot of case law to go on and things like that, but, uh, but thank you all very much.
You're welcome. It's kind of you to thank us and, you know, Bruce has spent an enormous amount of time, um, with the data and he and I have met with all the fire departments. We've taken a lot of time to educate ourselves and it's, it's good when you're faced with a problem to try and look at all sides.
That's true, and, and, you know, the fire service is an inherently complex thing, you know, whether it's operational or administrative, the whole thing is just, there's so many ins and outs of it, so to, to try to weed it out in as, as short a time as everyone has, you know, I think we've done as, as well as we could. So, that's all I have to say, but thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Bye, Kevin.
We've, we gotta, Jim's here, so we ought to talk about Vandenberg Cove.
Oh, okay.
Um, Jim, that, that's Jim Baker, he's on our Vandenberg Cove committee. Um, there's, there's two things that have happened. One, we've gotten violations, potential violations with INI. Uh, I think I sent you that note.
Do you want to say what INI is for everybody?
INI.
No, that's you and you.
That's me and you.
Okay. It, it's, uh, infiltrate, water infiltration into the collection system. Um, and the, the DEC has said that in, in a couple of periods, our, uh, flow rates have been higher than were permitted for. And that those are associated with rain, heavy rains and, and thaws and things like that. Um, they've also questioned why we didn't do phase two and phase three of the rehabilitation, and that's where we had decided, talking with engineers and several other people that looked like the repairs that we had done were adequate. So we're, we're now reevaluating where we are with that. The second thing is, um, and Elizabeth and I met with our engineer and our operator down at the DEC this morning. Um, the other thing is that the property twenty-one Cove right across from the, the north plant has been sold and is now being, is trying to be sold again, and they are willing to give us an easement, which they never were before, and they would like us to somehow bless, um, that, you know, that piece of property and, and the system that runs through that. It, it seems to be holding up the sale, so...
Can we bless? What do you...
What does bless mean?
Means have an operator inspect it. We were never allowed on the property before. We never did any repairs on the property because we weren't allowed on it.
This is the first one on...
The manhole cover there.
Yeah, and I looked, I have a picture of what's in the manhole, or I took it off and I took a picture.
And, and what is, what is...
We, we have four violations. We haven't filed our report.
That's the main problem.
And, um, we, um, well, not according to the DEC, the main problem is that we have...
If we're different filed, it's...
Let me, if you want to come up and address us, that would be better, but let me finish talking. I'm just gonna add to what Bruce is saying. This just stops the cross talking. Um, the main problem for the DEC is that we did not do phase two and phase three of the plan, uh, which was a part of the permitting process. And, um, I guess we had some, some written, alleged, uh, written or verbal agreement from someone at the DEC at some point that since it looked like we were fine, we didn't have to do it, but the new director of area three is saying, not so. You must file the report that was due in January, which we'll take care of right away, and you must, uh, go out and do a field assessment, and I want a timed plan of how you're going to achieve parts two and parts three. They're holding our feet to the fire on that, so it looks like we're going to have to go ahead with phase two and phase three as agreed with the original, is that, is that...
I, I don't think, I, I, I understand it differently. I understand that they're saying, tell us if the, if you still, from an engineering point of view, think you need to do that.
That's not what I took away. I took away with, it wasn't up to you to make that decision, you already agreed to do this.
Yeah, and I, that isn't what I took away.
Okay. Well, in any case, um, Carl Smith from, um, Weston and Sampson, our, our water engineer, is going to read the original two thousand nine proposal. He's going to go out and do a field visit, he's going to do an assessment, and we're going to get back to the DEC in six weeks with what...
They're gonna estimate cost?
With what our plan is.
We were told very clearly by the DEC that cost is not an issue.
Cost is not their, their problem.
It's... So, but, but anyway, the reason we have, we, we heard it differently is because the, the person who was running the meeting was very hardline, I think. And the way I interpreted it was, if, if you're asking us to, with, through our engineer to go back and look at it and see what could be done and possibly amend the recommendations that were phase two and three, that's where I take they're willing to look. And, and so, so that's why we heard it differently.
Well, what does phase two and three involve? Does that mean replacing all the pipes, uh, coming down the hill?
All the mains, relining the mains and the manholes. But, oh, you know what?
That's a big job.
She said if we did an inspection and the manhole covers were in good shape and our engineer attested to that, we'd be fine with that. But if the INI was still out of whack, um, and we didn't find any storm water going into it or sump pumps, we would need to look at phase three, the relining.
Right, but, but then we got into the laterals, people hooking their sump pumps into it, people running their gutters into it and everything else, and we asked, well, how do you go, how do you go and inspect that? And we were told you have to have a law, so we're gonna have to get two laws to do that if we go down that path, one from Ryan Beck and one from my car.
Local laws.
To go on to knock on people's door and say, can we look in your, at your toilet?
Did the person, uh, the person you spoke to, was she an engineer?
She's an engineer and she's area three manager for wastewater engineering. So we talked to her, we talked to VJ, who we've been dealing with over the years and his laws, so she was pretty...
Maybe the next conversation you ought to have an engineer with you and maybe...
We had an engineer with us.
And which version of the, uh, meeting does he take away from it?
What meeting, he said. Um, he's got six weeks, he has until August to come back with a recommendation, uh, fill in the report that was missed, um, and do a field visit and do a dated schedule of what he will do based on what he thinks needs to be done. But there's evidence that there's problems with the system. We've blown our INI several times to about twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a hundred percent.
Could you, could you want to come up to the microphone?
I mean, the systems are twice as big as they would need to be, is that true?
It doesn't matter, we're allowed X amount per day and we've gone over that within a month.
No, uh, yeah, I, you're, you're correct, you're both correct. What the question is, is if, if we have an eight thousand gallon per day permit...
For twenty homes.
Our system is sixteen thousand gallons.
Eight hundred gallons a day?
Eight thousand.
Person?
Eight thousand gallons.
What's eight? Eight thousand is what we got, which says on twenty homes, that's four hundred gallons a day.
Yeah.
All right, and you're saying we're going at sixteen, which is eight hundred gallons a day. That's an awful lot of stuff.
Right, now this is water, they're saying, so, so that's why we think there might be a break someplace.
Right, I could understand down in North Field where it actually runs downstream.
Right.
And what they're complaining about is the South Fields, the last three that they had on the list there, which is very interesting. All right, so, I mean, we have flow meters, I mean, I guess what we need to do is take a look and figure out where the water's come from because there's no stream for it to come from. It would have to come from gutters or sump pumps.
Or cracks and... Well, that, that's the first thing that they said, go after the low lining through our engineer.
Again, we can't get any people's houses did. We can start with a state home, which always has water running out of it, all right, because that's always running. You can always hear water because they have sump pumps in their basement, probably at least two. All right, but, I mean, they need to get their reports. If they get their reports, they're pretty happy. But it would be interesting to see, it says a per day of sixteen thousand, which is really interesting because that's eight hundred gallons a day from twenty homes.
Mm-hmm.
That's awful lot of stuff.
Were they only talking about one plant? Is it only one plant that blew it?
Well, there was the north one in two thousand ten, I think, is already eleven.
Hold on one second.
That was one, and the other ones are South plants.
Excuse me, one second. What, what, did they, today they were saying eight thousand per day.
Right.
That's what it's allowed for each.
Eight thousand, each plant is eight, eight thousand.
So was one plant blowing it? It was just the South plant?
The last three reports.
Yeah, and the last three reports, but...
One for April, March, and I think sometime last year.
July.
Yeah, last year. And I'm pretty sure if there's a problem, we've had some pretty good rain for two days there when the water was really flowing good.
Sounds like there's some mixing going on.
No, it depends, if people got their gutters going into it or if they got their curtain feeds going into it for the water, because it's all clay. I mean, if you got pipes there or not, as long as there's holes, the water will run down it.
So what is your, as a homeowner, what, what's your input on this? What, would you like to see that?
Two and three was turned down because they, the cost was gonna be ridiculous, all right, and the system is already working. I mean, there's, there's some breaks, fixing the brakes is what we need to do and find them.
But the DEC is taking the standpoint that cost is not their concern, and if we can't mitigate this, they're gonna force us to do two and three.
All right, they can try. But I mean, it needs, it has to be a reason to do it. And the reason is because, hey, we're just seeing too much water, let's find out where the water's coming from first.
That was our engineer's point.
Right, that's what they, I mean, like I said, the South Field doesn't run down a stream. The North Field runs down a stream. I mean, and that stream gets pretty good because it gets all of Route Nine runoff up above there. So that one I would expect if there's gonna be a problem, and that's also why that house on twenty-one, uh, was flooded off its, uh, foundation, right?
Which is twenty-one, down or up?
That's down.
On Cove?
It's all the way around to the end of Cove.
Towards South Mill?
Towards the river, towards the river.
Yeah.
All the way around to the end on the non-riverside, so... But, yeah, I mean, they're talking, what, eight hundred thousand or, for two and three, I think, to do?
Twenty homes. For twenty homes.
Forty homes.
Forty.
I think it might be, I think four and a half, what else?
Way, way back when, Alan, just for your information, we were told that for a system to be economical, it had to have at least forty-four units on it. And, uh, so we have two systems with twenty on each one, so we're, we're never gonna get...
Economical.
Economical. The other thing was, we were told that seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars was what they considered the threshold for payment for sewer hook, you know, sewer service and that kind of a thing. And there, these folks are paying twelve hundred because they're paying for the debt service too. service too. So, you know, I mean, it's not that great an amount of money, but it's still a lot. It's over the percent. So-
1,200 is down by, when we was at 4,000 one year.
Yeah, at one point, they were pumping daily, sludge and everything out of it daily.
Mostly water.
With respect to the-
Sludge is not going to get developed that way. It's going to be water from everywhere.
With respect to the first thing you mentioned, Elizabeth, about blessing something, I would be very leery-
No, Bruce mentioned that.
Or Bruce, I'd be very leery about blessing anything there because all we're going to do is get ourselves as a town libel for whatever advice we give. Why would we not be blessing anything?
Well, we have an obligation to say that now that we're allowed to be there, that we have looked at the manhole and pipes that we are responsible for that run through the property, and we see no problem.
Now, do you have to dig up the pipes to-
No.
Still look.
I think you really got to get Warren involved in any kind of language we give.
I think it's an engineer doing the verbal, I mean, doing a visual inspection.
Warren has to get us the easement before we even do anything.
Well, we have some money for the engineer to cover this, this period, correct?
We have, I think, what have we figured, like 23?
$23,000?
Yeah, that was sitting in there.
So we're covered. And let's see what happens when Weston and Sampson takes a look and comes up with a proposal. We'll keep you informed. Any other comments or questions about the code? Artifacts?
Can we restrict them?
I thought you went, the last proposal was $75,000 in cost?
An engineering proposal?
I don't understand what you're asking. Can we restrict the engineers?
Cost.
Carl said he'd get back to us and give us an idea. He had no idea what this would cost.
I want a new plan. Here we had two additional plans we paid for.
Yeah. No, this is, this is not a new plan. This is to go through the plan that we, current plan that we have, and see if any of it still holds water, sorry.
No pun there, pun intended.
Doesn't hold or isn't holding water. It's for our current, one of our current consulting engineers to go through the existing plan and deal with the DEC, file the report, and tell them how he's going to look at this problem.
File a report.
Okay.
Carl is walking through the system tomorrow morning with Alan. So they're hoping it rains tonight. Carl, the engineer.
And Alan, the hope?
VRI operator.
Can I ask how we get the daily report of how much water is being put through? Do they have, who, how do they get that information? Is there something at the end of the unit that measures which goes into the creek?
I'm not sure, but, you know, we have the standard reports. You want a copy of those, the daily logs?
The daily report?
Yeah.
You can send one to me. I'd greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, VRI, VRI has it.
I want to see it going up and down.
We have the plot and everything, yeah.
We got a plot.
The other thing we have, I don't know, is that Carl did an informal comparison of the flows and weather patterns. And it does show a correlation between thaws and rain and the uptick, you know, the overflow in the INI.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see what like an average day is without rain and then see. Because, I mean, again, I'm interested to try to find out. I mean, when it rains, I could walk around to the covers and take a look. I'll try not to fall in.
Okay. The Reins and the Thompson-Mazarella Park artifacts. At our last meeting-
Let me say, Nancy's not here. Should we just maybe put this over to the next meeting?
Stop it, yeah.
Because we're just going to have to go through it again.
Sure.
It was lovely.
Fine with that. It's nothing urgent. For the public, I'll just say that we called Bard. Bruce and Nancy and I went to Bard, looked at all our Bard artifacts. They are indeed there. They're being very well taken care of. And we'll talk about it some more next month. Do we need to go into executive session?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Both of our issues have been resolved.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
In a second.
Back in.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.